Well, ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Don't look at the clock back there because it's hour late. It's now six o'clock. So I want to welcome you to the Board of Commissioners, a special call meeting for tonight, on June 15th at six o'clock. And mention to you also, in addition to being live, we'll zoom in case someone wanted to zoom in on the meeting, make it available to whoever would like to be in attendance with Zoom or present. Appreciate you being here tonight. So we're going to call this meeting order, and we're going to move right along and ask Dr. Maxson. Each time we meet, we have invocation and pleasurable allegiance. And this month, Dr. Maxson, if you'll do that, please stand, please.
Please stand. Just bow our heads. We thank you for this opportunity to be able to come together and serve the citizens of Franklin County. We face some contentious issues tonight, and I pray for wisdom and forbearance and patience to help us to make wise decisions. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. First on our agenda tonight is a gentleman, Mr. David Sifel. Would you please come up? We have the seven pages that you've already presented to us and studied that, so we don't give you five or 10 minutes to tell us something we don't know about.
All right.
Oh, let's go. I'm sorry. I jumped, I jumped again. We got, excuse me. We got a young lady. I am so sorry. We got a young lady right here. We put out applications, we put out applications to get us a clerk here several months ago, and we had a good response. I am proud to say we had at least three or four that I would felt comfortable bringing in as our clerk here in Franklin County. But when it got down to the second interview or so, this young lady rose to the top. And I'm going to ask Mr. Thomas to give us a little more information about this young lady.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, this is her first day, and I guess we run her in right. Started at eight o'clock this morning, and very first day, very first board meeting. So thank you guys all for attending and welcoming her. Kayla is coming to us from South Georgia. And so this is a new experience, both new into the area, new into the county, new to this role, but I think she'll do a fantastic job. So I don't know, we can't shake hands or any way communicate with her close, but if you guys will all say hello, and let's hope that we don't run her off in the first night. That will be my goal for this evening.
I told them by the end of the meeting, she said she was proud to be here, and I told them by the end of the meeting, I hope she could still say that. We all appreciate your service and what you're going to do for the county and the citizens of the county. We appreciate it, Ms. Kayla. Okay, now then, let's go. Mr. David, give us, give us what you want us to hear tonight, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Board, for giving me this opportunity just to speak to you and try to address some concerns that came up at your June 1st meeting. I'm hopeful that you'll feel comfortable enough that if you have questions, I don't mind taking any questions at the Board of AIA. Because the purpose tonight is to try to address any concerns that you might have regarding the Airport Authority. On behalf of the Airport Authority, I also want to thank you to the entire Board of Commissioners for your past support of the airport and your current support of the airport. The Authority members believe that the airport is important for the economic development of both Franklin and Hart County, and that's why all those board members serve, is basically doing community service back to the community. My understanding is that your June 1st meeting, some concerns were raised about whether to reappoint Chairman Eddie Addison back to the Airport Authority. And as y'all know, under the local act that created the Airport Authority, the Board of Commissioners get to appoint two members to the Airport Authority. And I believe four years ago, y'all appointed Mr. Addison, and that was an instilled appointment because he is a pilot, and as a pilot, he knows planes, he knows airports, he knows what needs to be done in order to have a good operating airport. And so when you first appointed him four years ago, I would assume that everybody knew that he was a pilot, had a plane at the airport, and was interested in helping out of the airport, and that's why you appointed him. Typically, my experience has been that if you get somebody interested in the entity, they do a better job than someone that doesn't care about the entity. So again, I think y'all made an instilled appointment, and I would note that both this Board and the Hart County Board of Commissioners, both since 1996 have appointed pilots and those that have held ground leases at the airport to the Airport Authority. So Chairman Edison's appointment was nothing new, nothing different than what's been done since the creation of the Airport Authority. Chairman Addison, since he's been appointed, sort of has done a labor of love for the Airport Authority and has tried to improve the operations of the airport. He has spent countless hours revising ground and hangar leases. When the old leases couldn't be found, he had new leases drawn up, took the extra step of having those leases recorded on the public records, on the deed records, so that they'd be available to the public, to anybody that wants to see it. Under Chairman Addison's chairmanship, he notifies the media when the Airport Authority has a meeting, invites the media to come, and conducts all business of the Airport Authority in a public meeting. Also, audits have been done during his tenure as chairman. In recognition of all his work for the airport, the other Authority members elected him chairman. And I think it's significant to know that in the first year that he was on the Airport Authority, he got paid nothing. He got paid zero. On the second year he was on the Authority, he got paid zero. On the third year he was on the Authority, he got paid zero. On the fourth year he was on the Authority, he got paid zero. And that's not just him. Every Authority member doesn't get any compensation for the countless hours that they spend trying to improve the airport, trying to make the airport work. So it really is a labor of love. It really is community service. As I understand it, at the time that the reappointment has come up, some concerns have got raised, and one of the concerns is the Airport Authority has a conflict of interest provision, just like every government authority, city council, Board of Commissioner, they all have a conflict of interest provision. And when you look at case law, what case law is saying to all boards is that you're not to have a financial benefit by your service, that you're there to help the Board and put the Board's interests first. And so in the conflict of interest clause, that's been interpreted by the courts that if, say, a Commissioner member, an Authority member, a city council member has a direct involvement, a direct financial involvement in a matter before the Board, then they got to recuse themselves. They can't vote on it. And that makes sense, that it's limited just to those direct financial matters, because y'all know in a small community, you have people that come before you that are in your church, you have people that come before you that are in rotary with you, you got people that, you know, may be distantly related to your wife somehow. In a small community, you have all these emotional connections, and if you took conflict of interest to its logical extreme, nobody in a small community could decide anything because there's always a connection of some type there. So what the courts have done, they've come to this common sense rule that it's got to be something directly involved, a financial interest of a board member before he's got to recuse himself. And so part of the concern is, I understand, raised at the June 1st meeting was that he's a pilot and he's got a ground lease. Well, you know, that's been true since the Authority's been created back to 1996. There have been pilots having ground leases that were on the Authority. He does have a ground lease. He pays the same thing as everybody else. And under the case law, again, there's a case, that's Story versus City of Macon, where council, city council had to vote on paving projects in the city. And one of the streets to be paved was where one of the council members lived. And the court looked at that and said, that was not a conflict of interest for that council member to vote on that paving project, because he didn't get any greater benefit than anybody else in public. So the court did recognize that if you have a direct financial interest, you should recuse yourself and not vote. But if it's something that affects the community as a whole or in general, you can vote. And an example would be if the Airport Authority was going to uniformly raise the amount of rent for the ground leases to be paid to the Authority, that would affect everybody the same, then Chairman Addison could vote on that, because it's affecting everybody the same way, and it's not just specifically involving only him. I would note, too, that in this conflict of interest provision, we sort of called around, talked to DOT, the Intermodal Division that has the aviation section of the DOT, and they said that most state authorities that are involved in airports have pilots or people with ground leases that serve on the Authority. And again, that makes sense in a way, in that you've got somebody interested in the Authority, interested in the airport, knows something about planes, knows something about ground leases, knows something about aviation fuel. You want to have somebody knowledgeable, because they'll do a better job for you. So DOT tells us that statewide, it's not unusual to have pilots on the Authorities for the airport. The other issue that came up, I think, is the swap of ground leases. And what happened there was that the Vice Chair, Mike Ward, approached Chairman Edison and said, "We got this dilapidated hangar, and we want you to trade it for your hangar." And Chairman Addison's hangar was a fully functional and operational hangar. It had heat, air, a working toilet, and office. It was in good operating and functional condition, and they were wanting him to swap it for a hangar that was nowhere near that. In fact, a part of the roof had fallen with the previous lease, and hit the plane in the hangar, which, you know, if you have an airplane, you don't want stuff hitting your plane at any time, much less in your own hangar. So they proposed this swap to him, and he agreed to do it, and he did it for three principal reasons. That one, the prior administration of the Airport Authority left the Airport Authority not in the best financial shape. So by giving his functional and operational hangar to the Airport Authority, gives the Airport Authority a hangar that they can rent out at a greater ground rent, a greater rent, and hopefully bring in more money to the Airport Authority, which will help them The second reason why Eddie did it is that he wants the airport to succeed. He loves to fly. He wants to have an airport near him where he can store his plane and fly. And then the third reason why he did it was that he wanted a newer hangar with a bigger door, because as some of you, most of y'all are younger than me, but you'll see, as you get older, your hand-eye coordination is not the same as it is when you're in your twenties. And so Eddie wanted a bigger hangar door so that he would have more room for air, so to speak, in getting his plane in and out of the hangar. So with the hangar swap, all the economic benefit flowed to the Airport Authority. Eddie did get an emotional benefit out of it, because he helped the Airport Authority, and it also allowed him to tear down the old hangar and build a new hangar with a much wider and bigger door that makes it easier to get his plane in and out of the hangar. I also wanted to emphasize to you guys that when they did this hangar swap, you know, they didn't do it in the dead of the night. They went to an attorney at law, had an attorney at law look at the transaction. The attorney at law gave an opinion that it was legal. This attorney drew up the paperwork. The paperwork shows zero consideration, so Eddie didn't get any money, and the Airport Authority didn't get any cash money, but they got an operational hangar. So they, they did their due diligence to try to do this right and do this in a legal fashion. And, you know, you go to an attorney, and the attorney says, "This is the way you do it, and it's legal and it's fine," then, you know, most people I know rely on what their attorney tells them. So the swap, while I can understand on initial blush that some might have concerns about it, when you dig down into it, all the economic benefit went to the airport, and all that Eddie got out of it was an emotional benefit from helping the airport. And so we would submit to you, that's the kind of person, a person in integrity, that you would want to be on the Airport Authority and that you would want to serve the citizens of Franklin County. And I go in more detail in my letter. I'm not going to repeat everything I say in my letter, but if y'all had any questions, I'll be glad to try to address any questions that y'all have.
Gentlemen, y'all got any questions?
Not any questions, other than to clarify for the record that he hasn't served on the Airport Authority for four years. He came in to fill the remaining term of the previous.
He's been on the Authority approximately a year now.
Yeah, not four years. Yeah. That was the only, the only thing I needed to.
Okay. I may have gotten that detail wrong, but I know I got the detail right, that during that year, he didn't get paid anything to serve, and that he was doing it out of a sense of community service.
That's correct. And we appreciate the volunteers. That's what makes the world go around, is volunteers.
Are there other pilots besides Mr. Addison who are tenants and who serve on the Airport Authority right now?
My understanding, there is, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions, gentlemen? Thank you. Appreciate you taking your time to come down, talk to us tonight. Appreciate the information you sent us, approximately, I think, seven pages, y'all, very, very interesting. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir. Let's move along now, and I think, first of all, we probably need to clarify some things. How did we get here to this point tonight? Well, simple fact that back in October, when the hangar switch took place, it raised some eyebrows and so forth. And so down the line and so forth, we asked our attorney to give us a professional legal opinion about this. I will take the blame 100%. This county has, to my knowledge, has never, never had a person with a hangar and a plane there until Mr. Addison come in. And he came in approximately this time last year, a little before. And so I agree with you. Seemed to be a nice guy, had good credentials and so forth. So I apologize to the citizens, I did not read the legislation, because I already knew there were several pilots on there. And I'm talking about good pilots, good people, good citizens. So we put Mr. Addison aboard. But when that eyebrow come along, raising eyebrows back in October, then our attorney gave us a legal opinion. We got this legal opinion, May 14th. I'd like to share it. If our Commissioners will vote a little bit later to release it to our press, because this is confidential between clients and attorney. But I'd like to say that our attorney takes a different approach. He pointed out pretty clearly that it was a conflict of interest, that we need to move Mr. Addison from the Airport Authority in his judgment. Now, we sat back and said, whoa. As you know, eventually a GBI investigation started taking place of the airport. And in addition to that, the GBI agent told some of the Commissioners here, and they had the opportunity to talk to the GBI agent, but he told me personally, after I asked a question from, from the legislation, the GBI agent said, yes, you commission is in violation of the ordinance. In addition to that, I believe Dr. Maxson called our DA, District Attorney, and gave an opinion from him. The opinion that I received back through Dr. Maxson here was that the DA says, yes, y'all are in violation of the legislation.
No, he did not say that.
I'm sorry?
He said, he said that a pilot serving is a conflict. He did not say that we were in violation.
Okay.
That's very different thing.
Same thing if we let him serve. So airplane pilot that's serving on the Authority is in violation. So if we allow that, we're in violation of the attorney. However, we're going to stick together as Commission and solve this issue. The spinoff of June 1st meeting, then, a motion was made, I believe, again, for Dr. Let me read that motion that was made as a result of our June meeting. Dr. Maxson made the motion that the Board issue a call and authorize the county manager to draw a letter asking for the resignation of both appointees to the Airport Authority, Eddie Addison and Bill Flower. The Board would then issue a call for a special call meeting within the next week to look at making new appointments to the Airport Authority. That motion was seconded by Commissioner Swales, and it was voted unanimously for us to do that. Now, we're two weeks away from June 1st, as you know, but last week, we had to take care of the issue. Was very important for us to get started on our insurance program for our employees. So we met last week, and we approved our insurance program so our staff could go ahead and get them enrolled. So we moved this one back a week to deal with it. So that's where we at today. I've been looking at applications, and hopefully the Commissioners have been looking at applications. I spotted four, three or four that don't have a plane. That would be good Authority Board members to put on there, that wouldn't have a conflict of interest. We're facing two issues. One, in conflict of the legislation, which has been pointed out. The other issue, I think we need to just let the GBI investigation help that, and that's don't concern ourselves too much with what took place at that particular time. So I'm going to ask the Commission, feel free to speak up, tell us what direction, and see if we can get concurrence on what direction to take. Mister?
I'll just say, prior to our meeting two weeks ago, we had all met individually, I think, with the Chairman, and all of us had come to the consensus that we needed as a, as a Commission to wait until the end of the GBI investigation before we did our reappointments. Now, at that meeting, our attorney dropped the bombshell. He said that the conflict of interest was a crime, and that if we did not remove Mr. Addison that night, we were in danger of a criminal referral to the District Attorney through the GBI investigation. So he basically said, you're in danger of being charged with a crime if you don't act tonight. And then to come to find out, we didn't even have applications, really, of qualified people to serve at that time. And we, we took the time to look at those. So that led to us asking for the resignation. Now, since that time, we have learned that we, the Board is not in any jeopardy by waiting. If we wait to the end of this GBI investigation, we are not in any danger of any kind of criminal referral. And the conflict of interest in and of itself is not a crime. You resolve a conflict of interest by removing someone or having them give up the thing that causes a conflict of interest, in this case, a lease. But I, I feel like, based on our original consensus, we should wait until the end of this investigation before we take any further action. And that would be my recommendation for tonight.
All right, we got a recommendation from Dr. Maxson.
And I'd be willing to make a motion for that. Yes.
Thank you. Dr. Maxson puts that motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Wester makes a second on that motion. End of discussion. I'll make a statement for the fact is, we ticked about two different issues. We can wait till the GBI agent's investigation is over with. As long as we're not going to get charged, I don't like the idea of being out of the realms of the law, so to speak, but if that's the wishes of the Commission, I personally don't see that's going to solve this issue. However, if that's, we got a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion? We got four in favor of that motion. We got one negative in that motion. So that's on side of that solution. But basically, let me close out. I have a solution. Never bring a program up unless you can present a solution. And I'll just briefly mention this in front of everybody, so everybody be in tune with what the solution is. Havisham County was in chaos with their airport a couple of years ago. We even inherited some of the people that had a hangar at Havisham because it was in such chaos. They made some adjustments, which formed a Commission rather than Authority, and had a public works personnel in charge. And the word that I get from the Chairman, Mr. Stacy Hall of Havisham, is the fact that he was amazed in the last two years, the difference amount of grants and money. he was amazed in the last two years, the difference amount of grants and money that had been obtained. They have really built a new terminal, expanded the airport runway, and so that is what I'm proposing, I call Chairman Dorsey, Hart County, and told him to run that by his commission. And we don't know where that will go. Hopefully, we'll have a little discussion about it.
I missed that, what exactly were you proposing? I didn't understand.
A solution would be to change from the authority, and I would personally like to have those volunteers that are so good, the key volunteers, but we don't want them to be looked at as they're taking advantage of the citizens. So it is keeping the volunteers going, don't change a thing, let them keep their hangars, let them keep their leases, change the setup in order that we can make sure there's no conflict of interest.
But you would change it from an authority to what?
I would change it from authority to a commission. And I would actually ask, I think we're in financial condition, that we could put a manager at the airport, pay 50/50 from each county, have also a public work personnel in the county to assist that person to getting grants. And that's what impressed me mostly about talking to Mr. Hall about Hall County. He said he's super, and he would share how they did that, because they was in the same situation we in. He would share that we'd have to get the legislation changed to get on.
Do, how does the commission work differently from authority? Could you tell us that?
Actually, that's what we need to investigate.
I called, I called and reached out to several airports across the state to ask, "Do you have pilot tenants who serve?" And I got a mixed bag, but the prevailing view was, yes, they serve, they're important, they're pilots in general. I talked to someone at Ben Epps Airport, and they said they have one person currently serving on their authority who is, who is a pilot tenant. He said it works very well, there have been no issues. I talked to the manager at the Jackson County Airport, and he said that there are, there are some ethical concerns. They have those pilots who are tenants have to know there are certain situations where they might need to recuse themselves, but he said it can work. And I talked to the Havisham Commission, the outgoing chairperson, who is the incoming secretary, because they rotate, he said that he thought it was very important to have pilots on there, and he said currently, three of five of their members are pilot tenants. And he said it works very well, he was very, they seem to be satisfied. And that was just him, I didn't talk to anybody else on the commission. But there, it seems to me that there are, that that's pretty common practice across the state. And I know that every authority or commission may be set up a little differently, and that's what probably needs to be looked at, but it is common practice. And in a, I talked to one person in Savannah, that was a very large metropolitan airport, and of course, that's a very different setup from here. In a rural community, you know, it's served by two counties, there are very few people interested in serving, probably beyond the pilots. And so that's a huge pool of people that we've had to draw on to serve on the authority in the past.
Well, I agree with you. I'm not saying we don't have anybody that's got a hangar and a plane on the authority or commission, but it's governed a little bit better, so it will take them out of the way of just what happened here that visualized that that person is taking advantage of the citizens, eliminates that. So I agree with you, we've got to have, we've got to have people and experts on the commission that really understands aviation, and we've got to have somebody in charge so we can initiate a lot more grants and contributions. So we'll be looking at that.
I want to ask, and the idea of you said that essentially, they recuse themselves from situations where there may be a conflict currently. Did Mr. Addison recuse himself from that hangar lease vote?
He did, he did. He didn't vote on, that involved him, the swap, he did not vote, he recused himself.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other questions before we adjourn, Commissioner?
What is the question?
Excuse me, we'll be glad to talk to you when we adjourn here. So do I have a motion with adjourn?
I'm a motion with adjourn.
Thank you, Commissioner Wester, make the motion. In a second?
My second motion.
Dr. Maxson, second to that, all in favor? We stand adjourned, and we'll be around to talk to you if you want to talk. Thanks a lot.